ACMI productions are only made possible with your support. Visit patreon.com/ACMI to learn how you can help.
Good evening, Arlington. This is the Arlington School Committee. Today is Thursday, May 23, 2004. It is 6:32 PM for our regular second meeting of the month of May. And we are on Zoom. We have a member who is coming in remotely, Dr. Allison Ampe. So for the sake of appropriate regulations, please confirm that you can hear us and we can hear you.
I can hear you.
And we can hear you. So because we're on Zoom, anything you say may be recorded and put into cyberspace and be a part of the meeting. Meeting is recorded and broadcast on ACMI for the next 30 seconds or so because we're about to hit executive session for a joyous, joyous reason. The attendees who are not participants attending via Zoom will need to leave this meeting now and rejoin after our executive session. To do this, we need you to follow the process. And I think everybody's out, but I'll read it anyway. All attendees who are not participants need to leave the meeting. They need to log out rather than have being removed so you'll be able to get back in when we're out of executive session. After all attendees log out, we will lock the meeting so we can begin the executive session. When the executive session is over, we will unlock the meeting and readmit any of the attendees who are waiting to be let into the meeting, plus any new people who want to join us. We cannot use breakout rooms for this meeting, unfortunately. That's, I don't see why we'd want to, but we can't set that up. So we need to work on breakout rooms for the future if that's what we want to do. So we now have on the agenda, "In executive session to discuss strategy, we respect the collective bargaining and litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body," and the chair so declares. And the chair is declaring that we are going into executive session for the purpose of AEA Unit A negotiations. On a motion by...
So moved.
Ms. Exton is seconded by Mr. Thielman to go into executive session. Roll call. Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative. We are now in executive session. We are back. It is now 6:40 on a beautiful Thursday evening here at the Arlington School Committee Room, where we have emerged from executive session. And what we're going to do now is we're going to revote the motion that was adopted in executive session. So the motion was to approve the successor agreement with the Arlington Education Association and authorize the chair to sign on the committee's behalf. Motion by Ms. Morgan?
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Gittleson?
Second.
This works so well. And we have a roll call vote. By the way, anyone want to comment first? I'm sure we have comments. Yes, Mr. Carden?
Sure, thank you. Dr. Allison Ampe and I were the school committee representatives to negotiating, to the negotiating team, and I want to thank the administration for all their work in putting together the proposals and running the crunching the numbers. And I also want to thank Ms. Keys and her team for their very cooperative relationship and partnership in coming to a wonderful agreement to advance our town, our schools. Thank you.
Dr. Allison Ampe, are you with us? Yeah. Would you like to comment as a member of the negotiating team?
Just, I echo what Mr. Carden said and especially thank the AEA for their willingness to listen and keep working through things that we didn't necessarily agree on and try to come to something that was a happier place for both of us, I mean for both sides. And also, I want to thank Mr. Carden because he did a lot of the work, especially near the beginning. So, thank you.
One additional, sorry, one additional thing. I also want to thank the voters of the town of Arlington for passing the override that allowed us to make a substantial increase in our compensation. Thanks.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Okay. I'm going to echo some thank yous, and I want to share a little bit about what we're so excited about with this agreement. So it is our pleasure tonight to share that we've reached an excellent agreement with the Arlington Teachers Association, following what I believe is a very collaborative and collegial negotiation process. I also want to share appreciation for members of the bargaining team, Mr. Carden, Dr. Allison Ampe, Dr. Ford Walker, Mr. Spiegel, Principal Amadi, and our legal counsel, Mr. Domanello, as well as members of our team who contributed to data collection and financial analysis that contributed to the bargaining process for both teams. I also want to share my appreciation for our Arlington teachers, especially those who served on the bargaining team. Ms. Maderos is here, Ms. Ferante, and Ms. Keys, as well as all of the other members of the team, giving up their afternoons and evenings for the past few months to engage in rich and productive discussions about important issues for our teachers and students. I'm continually grateful and reminded about the steadfast focus our teachers have on the well-being and success of our students. And as a result of our collective focus on improving the system for Arlington students, our discussions focused on issues important to the success of our strategic plan and a cohesive path forward for the Arlington Public Schools. I want to echo Mr. Carden's thanks to the Arlington community, whose votes in November made this agreement possible. Without that support, our schools and our students would suffer, and the terms in this agreement absolutely would not have been possible. This agreement also wouldn't have been possible without the careful planning, deliberation, and commitment to our students of members of the community, including the school committee, members of the finance committee, and town meeting. This agreement is a really historic one. It includes compensation adjustments in year one and COLAs in year two and three that bring us to a competitive level of compensation with the Town Manager 12. It includes a parental leave package that makes us a leader in the Commonwealth, something we should be extremely proud of. It includes opportunities for mutual accountability when it comes to holding a high standard of instruction and service, particularly for our students who receive additional support in our schools. It includes an attendance incentive that allows staff to earn an additional personal day with strong attendance for the unit and takes into account the need for teachers to attend to their personal and professional needs throughout the school year. And it includes a revised structure for meeting time that expands our efforts to share leadership and responsibility for the effective functioning of our schools, and it includes a whole lot of other adjustments as well that I'm sure the public will learn about in the days ahead. But most of all, the agreement is a testament to how we do things here in Arlington and what makes Arlington really special. In Arlington, our students come first, and we know that well-compensated and well-treated human beings are better caregivers. In Arlington, we make commitments, we plan for them, and we deliver on our promises. Negotiations can be hard. We may not always agree about exactly how to go about achieving our goals, and we may see different paths towards the same North Star. But we find paths to collaboration and compromise because in Arlington, we know that our top priority is to create learning spaces where students can grow, belong, and find joy in their learning. And this agreement gets us one step closer to that vision, and we're very excited about it. So thank you all.
That was beautifully written, and I can't say much more except that it's obvious the relationship between this committee, the administration, and our professional staff is what makes this possible. And the fact that we're able to go in and negotiate in the context of mutual respect, mutual understanding, and mutual dedication to the same goals has made this a successful negotiation process. And I'm really grateful to our educators for all they do for our children and for how they partner with this community, this committee, and the administration in terms of bringing forth this agreement. Any other comments on this motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative. That's a unanimous seven-nothing vote. Congratulations to everyone.
Okay.
Julie Keys, our AEA president.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the people of Arlington, particularly for passing the override last fall, because that really is a historic step that I don't know of any other town that has said, "We will voluntarily raise our taxes to better compensate our educators." And we want to work, people want to stay in Arlington because of the respect they get here. So it's nice that they can feel they can afford to do so. I want to thank the members of our team. Besides Jenna Seave and I, we also had Elizabeth Higgins representing our elementary teachers, Masha Pandre representing our special educators, Noah Cabral representing our middle school teachers, and Erica Tonashell representing our high school teachers. This is a process we began in September, and we've been meeting weekly since September with double meetings some of these last few weeks in April and May. So it has been a gauntlet. It's been a lot of work. It's been a lot of number crunching. It's been a lot of info sessions and feedback sessions and surveying and sharing out of information with members. But we are excited for some of the opportunities that are going to come from this new contract. We always say that teacher working conditions are student learning conditions, and we're excited to see some improvements in those areas.
I also want to acknowledge that we have AEA reps Sif Ferante and Jenna Maderos with us tonight.
It's Seave, like Steve without a V, without a T.
Okay. Seave...
There you go.
Okay. Sif Ferante?
Yep.
I've been saying it wrong for a couple of weeks now, so I thank you for the correction. And Jenna Maderos. Would you like to say anything, either of you?
I think Julie said it all, but I'll just echo to thank you for everyone who participated in the process, and especially for the voters in Arlington who provided the funds for this historic agreement.
Yes, I'll just say thank you for the town of Arlington and the taxpayers for voting for the override, because it wouldn't have been possible without the residents of Arlington. So we thank you all.
I'm really proud of the way our community stands with our teachers. And that concludes that agenda item. We are now to public comment, and seeing that there's nobody signed up for public comment, we head on to the next agenda item. Student representatives, we do not have any student representatives present. Now we come to the summer programming report. Looks like summer is coming. Superintendent Holman?
Sure. I'll hand it off to Dr. Ford Walker. I just want to note that typically, we have the deputy superintendent and assistant superintendent of student services present this. We don't have Ms. Elmer with us right now. Hope she feels better soon. And we will be, Dr. Ford Walker will be speaking to those slides, and then if there are questions, follow-up questions, please do send them to Ms. Elmer and CC me, and we'll get back to you as soon as we can on ESY questions.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Holman. Good evening, everyone. So as Dr. Holman and Chair Schleckman mentioned, I'll be presenting on the 2024 summer programming. So I'd like to start off by introducing our team. So we have a few new team members this year. Michelle Crowley will be our new math program coordinator, and Liz Farola will be our new ELA, excuse me, program coordinator. And Carla Buzesi, who is our director of multilingual learner education, will be working together with another educator to run our summer MLL program. I'm very excited to be working with this team, and we've been doing some great planning thus far. So our K-5 summer learning program is funded through our Title I funding that the district receives. And the selection process that our educators use this year to offer invitations includes the following. So students who are currently receiving intervention services and also students who were recommended to participate from your teachers are students who receive the invitation. Our K-5 summer literacy program will run from July 9th through August 8th, and our program will take place three days during the week. And currently, we have 80 students who are registered to participate, and these are educators who will be teaching in that program. And the program will be prioritizing instruction that's centered around phonemic awareness, phonex fluency, and reading comprehension. And our math program will also run the same dates. Currently, we have about 78 students who are registered. We are still registering students every day. We haven't closed registration yet, just because we want to make sure that we're serving as many students as possible who are interested in participating and able to participate. And as I mentioned before, Michelle Crowley will be, excuse me, Crowley, will be coordinating that program, and instruction will be centered around mathematical reasoning, language, fluency, and operational skills. Our summer multilingual learner program is specifically offered to our newcomers in grades one through 12, and they will be working on academic language and content through thematic units. And also, they will be prioritizing instruction in nonfiction reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And that program is running from July 2nd through the 25th, and we currently have about 35 students who are registered. At our high school programming, that will include a few different options. One is the open online courses, where students will have an opportunity to participate in courses online. Some of the offerings include courses that are about an hour in length each day over the course of six weeks, and students can earn anywhere from .5 to five credits depending upon the courses. AHS will also offer an in-person credit recovery program. The program is designed as a five-week credit recovery program for AHS students, Middle Sex League students, and Minutemen High School students who earned failing grades in a required class during this current school year. And there will be 15 in-person class sessions. You go to the next one. Thank you. This just shares more information about the courses that will be offered. And so for our extended school year program, our ESY program, that program will run between the dates of July 8th through August 15th. And also, we have two coordinators for that program. And that program will take place over the course of four different sites, Pierce, Monony, Gibbs, and AHS. And finally, I'll share that we are updating our APS website to include elementary and secondary summer learning experiences and enrichment opportunities for students and families to access throughout the summer in order to try to prevent some of the summer lost learning time that typically occurs every year. And we are hoping to launch that during the last week of school in order to provide extension opportunities for students and families. I will take any questions.
Any members would like to ask questions of the summer program? Ms. Morgan?
I don't know which of the, which person this is for, but I think we, am I right that at one point we were working on a partnership with community ed around some of the time, like, where we do, like, to sort of partner with them for some of the kids who are in some of this programming? Do we...
Yeah.
Okay. I feel good that you're nodding, because I feel less crazy.
Yes. So the Summer Fund program that ACE runs has options for classes that are enrichment classes in the morning and in the afternoon. We have, so I can update a little bit on that. We've been running a couple of different options. One is for ESY students to have the morning sessions to go or be there. I'm not sure where they're exactly placing it, but to do the afternoon sessions at Odison so that they have a full day set of programming. Another thing that we're doing and are continuing this year is that we've had a cohort of students from Boston who participate in Summer Fund as well, and we do that at either, it's either a significantly reduced or no cost. We use funds from our Metco dollars to do that, and we're doing that again this year.
Great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Carden?
Thank you. So thank you for including the information that you have about the ESY programs, the numbers about how many were proposed and how many attended. That's not something we've seen before. It's very interesting. So one of the comments that I've heard from parents about the program is that, you know, four mornings a week, and for some, some of the students, it's not even the full morning. It's just a very inconvenient program. So I think we have a lot on our plate, but, you know, the fact that half, that less than half are attending is something that I think probably should be looked at at some point in the future. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Thielman?
Well, Dr. Allison Ampe had it first.
Well, I called on you. I'll get to Dr. Allison Ampe next.
My question is, how do you recruit the students or identify the students for the ELL, for the language learners?
So those are students that are newcomers. So if they are a newcomer, that's essentially the only criteria being used.
Newcomer to Arlington, at what point in time? Like before, they're in the school district now, or?
No, not necessarily. And so, meaning...
Newcomers to the country?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I get that. Just like, when do you, when do you identify them? Like, when do they find out about, how do they get, how do they know about the program? And how do they?
Well, so they found out about the program from our director, who makes calls to actually introduce them to the program. And also, it's part of the welcoming to Arlington, excuse me, the welcome to Arlington work that she does. Part of that includes, if you're a newcomer to the country, a newcomer, you have that status, and that automatically makes you able to participate in the program.
So we have enough information to identify these students before the school year starts?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
My question was somewhat similar to Mr. Carden, so I won't ask that one, but my other question, or actually, not a question, but a comment was just, I noticed that the numbers enrolled for this year for almost all of the programs is significant, a significant increase from previous years, and I'm really pleased to see that. And I'm not sure if that's because other years, it's how many actually came, and so these numbers will drop, or if you've actually recruited and will see a number, an increased number of students, which is what I'm hoping. So thanks.
Okay. Anything else? I know that in the past, we've had issues with getting the ELL, English learner population up to speed within the summer program. Part of that, I was told, was issues of recruiting staff, and I'm really, really heartened to see that we're heading, heading to a robust program this year without any angst being displayed at this point in the school year. So this is a terrific report. Go ahead.
Can I also mention one other piece that I didn't mention, particularly with the MLL program? So our director is working with our transportation department to try to make sure that we can provide buses, well, it'll be just one bus, actually running a route to help make sure that kids are able to access the program.
That's beautiful.
We'll see.
Beautiful. Anything else under this agenda item? Hearing none. We'll go on to the next, which should be the first read on district goals for 2425. Dr. Holman?
We met today in CIAA. Ms. Morgan, do you want to talk about our...
Sure. We met earlier today and had a long conversation, sort of going goal by goal, piece by piece. And we were, those who were there, it was a bunch of us, Ms. Exton, Mr. Carden, Ms. Gittleson, myself, Mr. Schleckman were there, and Dr. Ford Walker was there, and we were able to go through them and provide some feedback, which is not, is not yet in what you're seeing tonight, which is because we did it like two hours ago. So I know that that will be incorporated the next time when we read these at our next meeting. So that's all I got.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments on the policy? Of course, this is a first read, and we will bring that back next time.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm curious whether, so when we come back, I think the hope is that we do a first read tonight, we can come back to the next meeting at the beginning of June and have a final copy of these for approval, and then we'll be able to turn around and share them with educators and everybody as they plan and start to think about next year. And I guess I'm wondering what sort of format you'd like me to present them in, or if you'd like me to present them publicly. I can create slides, I can open up the document and speak to it next time, but if there was a preference, I was curious.
I'll leave that open to the committee's comments. Mr. Thielman looks like he wants to say something.
You're going to be making a presentation on this in one of our meetings? Is that what you're saying, or?
Yeah, I was, so if there are preferences regarding how I present this at the full meeting, so that the public can see...
I would do a deck, so that highlights the top.
I can do that.
Yeah, do a deck. I don't think it needs to be like verbatim, word for word.
Okay.
Throw some pictures in there, it's always good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm of that school. Ms. Morgan?
And then they need to be on the website someplace.
Yes, we'll make sure they're on the website when they're done.
I couldn't find the 2324 ones, so, which is fine, but that's good. We get the 2425 ones, because they're going to be fresh in 10 days, so. But it would be, they need, yeah, we just want to make sure that they're searchable and probably on the, also linked from the strategic plan page.
Yeah, they should be.
Okay, so there'll be a slide deck for a brief presentation of the committee. We'll know what's in it, because we've read them a few times and commented on them. They'll be in Novus. So we should have a quick adoption in our next meeting on the 5th of June, which is a Wednesday, so be there. Superintendent's updates?
All right. Give me a second. So I want to start by sharing photos from a RISE showcase that took place at Middle Sex Community College this past week. Two of our students who participated in the MACI program, which Ms. Elmer has spoken about, and we've dedicated some resources to in budgets in recent years. It's the Massachusetts Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment Initiative. Were recognized for their work in the program. Our student, Paul Conti, and his father were there, and Paul received recognition for the coursework he completed at Middle Sex Community College for credit, Calc I and II, as well as macroeconomics. Also recognized was our educational coach, Bridgette, and our MACI coordinator, Annalise Abdalnor. The provost was there, as well as the dean of students, and spoke to program participants. And the college president was also in attendance, so it was a very festive and exciting celebration. And that's the first picture that's on the slide. The second picture is from the Healthy Kids, Healthy Program Summit, which was sponsored by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the John Stalker Institute of Food and Nutrition. The acting commissioner, Russell Johnson, recognized 48 school districts across the Commonwealth for their successful completion of the Switch Massachusetts School Wellness Coaching Program, and Arlington was one of those districts that was honored. And the folks who were able to be there to receive the honor are pictured, and are members of our wellness committee. Katie Martin, who's a bishop school nurse, Kim Visco, who is our director of wellness, Denise Boucher, food services director, and Dorian Crowe, director of nursing, are there in the picture. And I also want to note that there are members of our wellness committee who could not make it, including Jane Morgan. And we have this beautiful banner that's over here on the wall that recognizes the work that we did to complete the school wellness coaching program, which resulted in some significantly revised policies that this committee has approved and that we have been working to make sure we are implementing faithfully. And so thank you all for your work doing that, and it's wonderful to be recognized for it. I also want to celebrate some exciting news in athletics. The Arlington High School Unified Basketball season just wrapped up. It's the first season of unified basketball in the Arlington Public Schools, which is super exciting. They had a Hoopapalooza celebration this week. Eleven teams from the Middle Sex League enjoyed playing two games, followed by a pizza party to celebrate the end of the season. Our softball team won the Middle Sex League Liberty Division Championship for the first time since 2018, and our girls' outdoor track team came in second place by half a point at the Middle Sex League Championship Meet, which is the best finish they've ever had at the league meet. I also wanted to share that we have had some Red Gym water damage and mitigation steps that we needed to take at Arlington High School. This was discussed at a recent Arlington High School Building Committee meeting. Essentially, what happened was that we had, we had sump pumps installed outside of Downs during Phase 2 construction to address some surface water and accommodate some roof drain downspouts. And during the winter and spring of '24, the site had significantly raised groundwater levels because of heavy rain. And so we've done some supplemental waterproofing, some, or Consiglio has done some supplemental waterproofing, redirected surface water and roof drains to reduce the volume of water. But unfortunately, damaged to the, there was significant damage to the wood gym floor during water being trapped underneath it during some of the flooding, and that damage was permanent. So the gym floor, the wood floor, has been removed, and the red concrete floor, which is why it was called the Red Gym, it now remains there. Practices are still happening there, but we're working on adjusting game schedules to account for the lack of regulation playing surfaces for games. The facilities and athletic teams have been extremely patient, collaborative, and responsive in working out a plan for mitigating the disruption, as well as our Middle Sex colleagues in helping adjust some game schedules while we await the finishing of construction of Phase 3. So I just wanted to inform the committee about that. I think a lot of folks have seen that the floor's been taken up in the Red Gym, and we've gotten some questions about it, so that's what's going on there. I'm happy to field any questions that folks have. And finally, we'll be saying congratulations to the class of 2024 in the coming week. We will have awards tonight on Thursday, May 30th, at 7:00 PM here at the high school, and then graduation on June 1st at 1:00 PM on Pierce Field. It's always a really exciting time to... It's always a really exciting time to see our graduates walk across the stage, and we're looking forward to it. An update on administrative hiring searches quickly. We have ongoing search for the Odyssean Middle School Assistant Principal. The finals are next week. We have an ongoing search for Pierce Assistant Principal. We just had the finals this week and hope to make an announcement soon. An ongoing search for K-12 Director of History and Social Studies, and as well, actually, the K-12 Director of ELA search is ongoing. It's, it's going now, it's not upcoming. And as we learned this week, we will be doing a search for a new principal at the Odyssean Middle School, as Mr. Maringer has informed us that he does not intend to return to Odyssean next year. And right now, we have posted for an interim role, and I am weighing some options and thinking about, thinking about things while I have some conversations with OMS staff and OMS families next week. And we'll use some of what I learn and what I hear about what folks are looking for and hoping will stay, and hoping might need to be adjusted in order to make a decision about how best to move forward with that search. Happy to answer any questions about that. Your enrollments are in your materials, and in a message earlier today indicated that I was intending on adding a fourth section in first grade at Stratton due to the needs at first grade and the fact that we still have enrollments coming in and have gone over 71 at that grade at that school at this point.
Terrific. Mr. Carden.
Just a comment, I just want to thank Dr. Holman and Mr. Bauer and whoever, everybody who's involved with the Unified Basketball Team. It's great. And we had mentioned, I brought it up a year ago or so, and I thought maybe it got dropped, but I'm thrilled to see that it started. Thanks.
Ms. Keys.
I have one more kudos for you. A couple of years ago, Dr. Holman introduced a Brandeis Teacher Leadership Program Fellowship for our staff, and our first cohort graduated last weekend.
That's great. Anyone else? Seeing none, next item is resolutions for submission to the MAS C Delegate Assembly. We had those for first read at the last meeting. I welcome a motion to advance three resolutions for consideration by the Delegate Assembly in November.
I, I move that we advance the resolutions to the Delegate Assembly.
Second.
Okay, motion by, Mr. Thielman, second by, was that Ms. Morgan?
I'm sure it was.
Okay, it's hard to tell, I mean, can't see anybody here. Any discussion? Hearing none, we need to do a roll call. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Yes.
Ms. Exton.
Yes.
Mr. Carden.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
And the chair votes in the affirmative, that's a 7-0 vote. Next item of business will be first read for several policies. Mr. Carden.
All right, so we have a bunch to walk through. Start with file ACA. That might have been already for a first read, a different version, but I'm not sure, and it's changed so much that I think it's worth calling this a first read. So this is a result of the resolution that was passed almost a year ago by the school committee. We adopted file ACA-E, but there was a prior proposal of ACA that needed to go through council review. After the council reviewed it and discussed it with Dr. Holman, this is the revised version, just some minor changes now. Considering that we have file ACA-E with more detailed guidelines, this just basically references those guidelines. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go, do you want to take a vote?
Go around and just keep going, and if anybody wants to stop, we'll stop.
All right, I will pause, see, no, all right. Next is BGB, which I had presented, and we had referred to the Policy Subcommittee in March. That's just to add our, our process about having a discussion, a first read like we are tonight, and then a second meeting where we have an action item for changing policies. That is being modified to also apply to resolutions, except for the MAS C resolutions, which we did do a first read on, but we don't have to under this policy if we decide not to in the future. But all other resolutions will be treated similar, similarly to policies, and we require a first read unless there's a waiver of this policy, as, as may be needed. All right, next is BDD. We have an existing policy about our relationship with the superintendent, and as I discussed in March, there were some suggestions from community members that there were findings of noncompliance that may or may not have been shared with us. So we are adding language to this to ask the superintendent to share such findings in a timely fashion. The language was modified significantly from what I had originally written, but again, it went through, we actually had two councils review these policies, both Katie Meinalt and Liz Valerio. And so this is the revised version. It's still basically, it keeps the intent of having the superintendent share with us findings of noncompliance.
I, I think that the superintendent pointed out in the committee meeting that this aligns with current practice, so that there's no big drastic change here.
All right. Next is a new policy, IHBB Child Find Policy. Child Find is a federal law, and there are also state regulations regarding it. It requires public schools to, to ensure that children with disabilities residing in the town, who are in need of special education, are evaluated and identified. Again, there was a suggestion from community members that we could be more visible about having this policy. We have a lot of policies in our policy manual that also echo state laws, state and federal laws, and this was one area where there was some suggestion that this might be helpful. Again, there was review and some revisions. The revisions are in the, if you want to go back after tonight and look at them, they're in the Policy Subcommittee Novus items. Again, there was just some clarifications. The wording now tracks the statute a little bit more specifically. The other item that changed was rather, you know, we generally are not, are not so prescriptive in our policies, as I originally proposed, of saying an email must go out, you know, on such and such time of the year to parents. So we took that out, and it's just, it needs to be included in the handbook, which is what we, we also review as a committee. And so that was a major change from the prior, prior version of this policy, and that is IHBB. All right. So the next one is new to anyone who wasn't at our Policy Subcommittee. Very briefly, the town of Arlington is applying to be a climate leader community, and as part of that, the town and the schools have to adopt a zero emission vehicle first policy, which basically says, when we're buying a new vehicle, if there's one, if there's a zero emissions vehicle available that meets our needs, we have to buy that vehicle. Heavy-duty vehicles, such as school buses, are excluded. So for us, it would only apply to the SUV we have and possibly some other smaller 10-passenger So rather than adopting the whole policy, which is in Novus, the school committee, the school board has, the select board has not yet adopted that, but they will be. And it was suggested at our meeting that we just modify our policy to reference that other policy. So that's what I did here with ECEV. Hopefully, the select board will adopt that policy before we have this come to a second vote. But that sort of depends on when our, whether or not we're having a second June meeting, so we'll work on that between now and our next meeting. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Thielman.
We, but you, you see, you're saying we, we can adopt ECEV? I mean, it's, it's pretty generic.
Yeah, we, we can. I think it's a little awkward to adopt a reference to a policy that's not finalized yet, but we'll, I mean, it's, it's close to final, so I agree with you, but we'll see what, see how that goes.
Okay, all right, just, just saying, we could probably.
I mean, ECEV already references the town's sustainability plan, so it's not that big a jump to go and include reference to, to the ZEV policy as well. It's just a matter of writing it properly to get it in. I'm sure that once the select board gets it done, we'll be, we'll be right on board.
We can, and it's not, we can wait, too.
Yeah. We have a very talented committee. Any other comments on the policies for first read? Seeing none, we go to our beloved consent agenda, which has one item on it, so that we could just do a motion of approving the minutes of May 9th, 2024. Motion by?
So moved.
Ms. Morgan, second by?
Second.
Ms. Exton, so on the motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of May 9th, 2024, roll call vote. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Yes.
Ms. Exton.
Yes.
Mr. Carden.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative. The minutes of the May 9th meeting are approved. Subcommittee liaison reports and announcements, budget. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thank you, just a second. So we met on May 15th. We talked about the FY '24 budget, the, and cleared up some questions that we had had before. We talked about the FY '25 budget. We talked about planning for future meetings, including looking at rental fees and what's included in the fee, when you pay for a fee, what are you getting with what you're paying? And the transition plan for the new Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, who'll be coming in August 1st, and some things that we'll follow up on in other meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next will be community relations. Ms. Exton.
Thank you. We are currently looking for people, community members who would be interested in participating in the Arlington High School Naming Advisory Panel. If you are interested in participating, you can email a letter of interest to Ms. Diggin's by Tuesday, May 28th at 4:00 PM. The Subcommittee will be meeting on Monday, June 3rd, to go through those interested parties. On Thursday, June 6th, we are meeting again to discuss possible adjustments to the buffer zone and plan for how to communicate and get information out to the community about that conversation. And there was a chat held on Tuesday that Mr. Schlickman and Mr. Carden hosted, and the notes about that are in Novus.
Mr. Carden, would you like to comment on the chat?
Not really. There was a little bit of a problem starting the meeting. I don't know if anybody left frustrated, but we did have one person join us. Again, it was a situation where she was just interested in hearing what was going on rather than having any specific concerns herself, so.
Uh, CIAA.
We met today, and we talked about the goals, as mentioned earlier, and we do not have another meeting planned at this time.
Facilities, Mr. Thielman.
We meet on Tuesday, June 11th at 4:00 PM, and I have a, I'm going to circulate a draft agenda to a few folks to get their feedback, and then I'll get the final agenda out soon.
Policies and procedures, I guess we've exhausted that, right?
Yes, the only other item is, as Mr. Schuckman pointed out, our policy manual requires us to review the policies every certain number of years, so we will be doing that, even though, you know, we totally revised them four or five years ago, so we don't anticipate major changes. But we'll probably start with the more interesting parts, like J or I, so if there's some section that you're more interested in than others, please let me know. Thanks.
It's like Taurus study, only you're shuffling the characters.
Right.
Dr. Allison, okay, Dr. Allison Ampe's hand is up, and then I'll recognize you. Yeah, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thanks. I just wanted to point out that I think the new, when we moved to the online manual, a lot of the policies don't have the date updated on them anymore. We lost that. And I think as we go through, we should make sure that there is a date updated that's captured on the policy, so we can keep track.
That's certainly appropriate, and there are some of those policies that require to be refreshed or reviewed on a regular basis, so having them dated is important for compliance purposes. Ms. Morgan.
When, I, I can't remember when this came up, but a review of the buffer zone policy in conjunction, if we're going to look at buffer zones, that policy probably needs a, a relook to line it, so, thank you.
Arlington High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman.
The Order of Conditions extending for the next, for three more years was signed today by the town manager, and we're moving along. Project is going along fine. The, Dr. Holman talked about the water issue in the Red Gym. That does not impact the new school at all, but it does impact the current school.
What is a, an Order of Conditions?
Well, that's what the conservation gives you to allow you to keep working.
Ah, okay.
And it, and it also specifically allows Arlington High School, or the town of Arlington, to purchase artificial turf, or a new field.
Fine. Liaison reports? Any liaison reports? Any announcements? Future agenda items. On our next meeting, which is June 5th, a Wednesday, everybody noticed, we're going to have to deal with the resignation of the school physician, which is one of those positions that we vote. We now have an ML PAC Subcommittee, which will operate just like the SPED PAC, so that we're going to need to appoint a school committee member as a liaison to, to the ML PAC. We have a, we're going to talk about summer meeting schedule. Now, I don't know if we're going to complete all our business for the year on June 5th, or we're going to need to continue to June 20th, but I would anticipate that we will probably need to have some sort of a business meeting to dot I's, cross T's, and make sure we're good to go for the school year sometime over the summer. So Ms. Diggin's has asked everybody for their vacation schedule, so we'll know when everybody's in town. Please make sure if she doesn't have it, that she does have that. Also, the question of a retreat has been brought to my attention, that the committee may choose to do that either in the summer or in the early fall. So if you're interested in, in this, please let me know, and we'll move forward to schedule that if, if there's interest from the committee. I think it would be an excellent idea. We haven't done one in a while, and we've had some membership changes. Dr. Allison Ampe, do you want to comment on that?
No, I was just, I agree that that would be a good idea, and have some ideas for what might be nice to talk about.
Superintendent Holman.
For what it's worth, I agree as well.
Okay. You're part of the team on this. We need the superintendent and the school committee together as a working team, and these retreats tend to do that. And I think that we're going to need to take a little look at file JIB, which deals with our relationship with our student reps, because I think that we are in a situation, just like every other school committee in the state, where we're not 100% conforming to state law, and we have to think about that a little. Anything else? Anything else that people want to put in for future agenda items? Seeing none, I will entertain into a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ah, I'm glad somebody wants. Motion by Mr. Carden, second by Ms. Gittleson to adjourn. Roll call vote, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Yes.
Ms. Exton.
Yes.
Mr. Carden.
Yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Yes.
Ms. Gittleson.
Yes.
Ms. Morgan.
Yes.
Chair votes in the affirmative. We are adjourned at 7:27 PM. Thank you very much. No Celtics.
Yes.